Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council Meeting of February 15, 2017. Could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Welcome all. Giving the clerk just a moment to make a couple of notes.
Ready.
All right. Mr. Clerk, please.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, the first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next, our submission of minutes of previous meetings, items A, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is the result of a citizen request to the Stop Sign Committee and also a pretty thorough report by the Police Department regarding a request for a four-way stop at the intersection of Magnolia Street and Roma Street. I think you've had the opportunity to read those documents. This is the first reading of that ordinance, 2017-02, which would allow for a four-way stop at that intersection.
Motion, this constitutes the first reading. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the petition of Jamiel Martitz of 8 Church Cove Road, requests council consideration for private investigator's license. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator and Chief of Police to approve.
Motion to approve private investigator's license.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next one, Mr. Chairman, I thought we're in a little better shape than we apparently are with this one, just based upon conversation I was just recently having on behalf of the petitioner. Essentially, what has transpired, to lack of words to describe it, is that there was submission of a new floor plan to replace the existing floor plan which was provided to you. Apparently, there's a further revision which you don't have in front of you, and so it makes it just a little bit more complicated. So you're kind of considering two things here, and if you read the recommendations, it's also a little bit complex. But that's why I kind of deciphered through all of it and presented to you the item D2, because the way that, in reviewing the file, what it really seemed as though we were doing is we were just providing a clarified floor plan, okay? Because the petition even talks about expansion of premises. It's not. It's the same premises that have been licensed right along, okay? The other thing is that the petition says they're requesting 12 bar seats where they are currently approved for six, but in actuality, they're asking for eight and not 12, okay? Which, if you look at the diagram, there are 12 seats that are located in that area, but four of them are at tables, which that's not something that the council usually gets into, okay?
For the point of the record, Mr. Clerk, before we go on about this, unless it's going to be withdrawn, I have to recuse myself pertaining to this case, so I don't know if you want to continue with me recusing or if...
I think if you're recusing, you should recuse for this part.
Before any more testimony gets in the record.
Mr. Clerk, I was wondering if we could combine D2 and I4?
I suggest you don't do that.
Tell us why.
Well, because this is specifically a license item. I mean, you can bring it forward, but I'd rather keep it as two separate votes.
Two separate votes.
We can do that.
Yeah, because one is an amendment to an agreement and the other's a license matter. So I think it's better if you have two votes, you can bring it forward, that's okay, but not combine.
So maybe the motion to bring it forward, so we can discuss all at once, but have two separate...
That's fine. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I4, yeah. I4 is moved forward.
Okay. So getting back to the problem at hand, okay, is that if you would like the opportunity to receive that amended floor plan and consider it at this point, I haven't had the time to do any comparison on it, okay? I'm confident in what I'm telling you with the first one, because I looked at it pretty carefully. This one, I have not. So you could maybe consider doing one of two things. You could take the new floor plan now and consider that one instead of the one that's submitted as the new floor plan, and look it over and see if you're willing to react to it. The other thing you could do, which I know this is part of it, is to, if you so choose, to allow the larger number of bar seats, which I know that is very much interest to the petitioner, and then maybe consider the floor plan the next time, so you have a chance to review it.
Diane, would you please maybe expand a little bit on this? I think the clerk did a good job, but is... We have... So, Mr. Clerk, you have an updated floor plan that we do not currently have.
It was shown to me about three and a half minutes ago.
Okay. So are you aware of the updated floor plan?
No.
Okay.
I know Jessica Flummer was working with the applicant as well. I'm not sure if she's seen it either.
Okay. So I guess to maybe... You can tell me who's the better one to answer this, maybe even the solicitor, is that what... It would seem to me that this floor plan would need to be weighed in on by Fire Department, Police Department, all of... I don't even know if water pollution needs to weigh in it, and I don't mean to downplay their importance, but...
I mean, what is the difference of the floor plan?
And the only difference is that we did show where the existing bar was, so I didn't have an opportunity to just explain that the amended just shows where the existing bar used to be. That's the only change in what you have. That's all it was.
Could you bring that forward?
Absolutely.
Take a look at that?
That's why I just asked him how I should distribute it. For extra information, I have copies.
Thank you.
I have copies.
Perfect. I'll hand them out.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Can you just, when you get back to the mic, just identify yourself with the record, please?
Certainly. I am Deborah Ventress. I am the designer and project manager, helping Quidos with the renovation and the expansion of the tent on the premises.
Diane, so am I to assume that you are not... You can't see what I'm looking at right now. Is that correct? Okay. May I ask that you come forward and grab this?
Sure.
And I'll look on with Tim here.
So you're basically moving the bar...
Thanks.
You're making it longer, but you're moving it to the north, basically.
Correct. And I just... And I thought that was, just so you could see, the addition where, when we first put the application in, I wanted to make sure that you knew where the existing one was for additional information.
See, legally, the existing one is by the floor plan that I have marked as D2A. So that's really what you have approved.
D2A.
Do you mean D2B was in our packet?
No. D2A is what was approved, has been approved for many, many years. That is the approved floor plan.
And what is D2B in our packet?
D2B is the redrawn floor plan that I'm hoping you'll accept as the floor plan.
Which is different than what was just handed out by just a ghosted and drawing of the...
So it may be just irrelevant because the existing location is really the A floor plan.
Right. Really has no bearing on this.
So do we need a motion to accept?
Well, that's... It would be suitable for you to do that, and that kind of resolves everything. And then going forward, we have a new floor plan, and the various parties have had the opportunity to see this.
So let's stop right here for a moment. Diane, the D2B, that is the "in our packet," which looks very similar to what was just handed to us.
Okay.
Do you know this? Or if not you, tell me who may be this person that would answer this question. Is this in fact what the current floor plan is?
I can't speak to what the current floor plan is. I know Jessica's been working with the applicants, and we've been coordinating with the clerk's office. I think the intent is to clarify the existing floor plan with the application that's before you tonight, to add the two extra seats at the bar.
Okay. So Deborah?
Yes.
The new updated plan shows eight requested seats at the bar.
That is correct.
Correct? Okay. All right. This is what we have as an existing floor plan, so it's very nondescript.
Right. And I think that was one of the things, is they had asked to get you an updated floor plan. I don't know what you're looking at, but the one that I did is the updated floor plan.
What is the yellow on the new version you just gave?
The yellow just indicated that we are aware that we want to have crowd control. It was just something that, again, so that you're aware of the fact that we...
What are the words? I'm just wanting to know the words, because I can't read them in the yellow.
Understood. It just says stanchions and proposed crowd control.
Okay.
I think attached. The stanchions, the picture of stanchions are attached.
So the clerk pointed out to this council that we could potentially consider the expansion of the bar seats. If we do that, then we could, at our next meeting, get... Could we get clarity? I know we can get clarity on the seating or the current setup. So if we were to consider and potentially approve those extra bar seats if this council sees fit to do so, would that move you forward in your process?
It would absolutely. And as mentioned, it is the same exact plan that you have. The only amendment that I made to it was to show where... We're moving it slightly. That was one of the things, so I can...
Okay.
But the 2B, the one that's 2B in the one you gave us, is the bar is the exact same location. You just showed us where the old one was.
Correct.
So it's no different.
It's no different.
But what about the tent? What's the purpose of all the information on the tent? Is it just...
That's coming up.
They're just going to replace the old? Are you going to be...
So that's where Lou had recommended two separate petitions. We are replacing the old.
Oh, that's the I, right, okay.
And then there's going to be an expansion of the current tent where it is to expand beyond that.
This one here is only about the bar, the bar seating.
So for clarity's sake, for not only the council, but for everyone, there are currently six bar seats at this establishment. The quester, the petitioner, is looking for two additional seats, which requires this council to say okay to. So we could, if this council is amenable to that, or obviously we need to discuss it, we can approve two additional bar seats if we see so, or not, and that would be our motion number one. And motion number two is to speak about this addition of the modification to the existing lease premises to allow a seasonal tent, which is my understanding that our lease does require any modifications to come in front of the council. That's why this is in front of the council. Am I correct?
Yes. And if I could just slightly...
Please.
I think this might help the clerk's concern, too. I kind of actually see three motions.
Oh, great.
Two with the effect of the seating. One would be to approve the addition of two more seats, and then to accept the drawing that has been submitted to you today as their approved site plan drawing for their seating, so that we have both of that, so that he can have that in the record. This is the approved thing. He'll stamp the date on it, and if there's a question that comes up a couple of years from now or whenever, we'll have the drawing that does it. And then you could deal with the issue with the tent and the...
Okay. I guess what I want to know is, do we agree that this is generally the existing condition? Obviously, there's notations here about additional bar seats. We understand that. We also understand that there's notations about a tent that isn't there. We get that. But that being said, does everything else look very appropriate for the current conditions? And Jessica, who is our EDC Director, feel free to weigh in if you believe there's value there.
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Chief, thank you.
Yes. So this is the first time I'm seeing this as well, so just something to keep in mind is I'm going to have to go down there and look at the capacity of that area, because now it's tented and it's going to be enclosed with stanchions as it's drawn out, so it's not an open field area. So adding seats really isn't the concern. The concern is if you add two seats and the capacity was 40, now you're 42, now you're over capacity. So I don't know offhand what the capacity is in that outside area. I don't know if you have that information offhand or remember.
I did. We did not have that information.
Or if it's done recently. So the adding of the seats isn't, for me, isn't necessarily an issue of where they are. It's what the total capacity is for that whole area, and that's just something that would need to be determined at some point.
Can I just clarify that point, then?
Please.
I mean, it really doesn't matter if, whatever the capacity is, it is, and if they want to take two seats from a table and put them at the bar, then it wouldn't really make a difference, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Just a clarification, too. The agenda item says expand the seating from six to eight. The petition says six to 12, so...
Yeah, I tried to explain that already. That's why the whole thing is very, very complicated, and I will tell you that it came in at the very, very last minute.
So is... Does the petitioner looking for six, or eight, or 12?
No. The petitioner... See, the council doesn't really consider seats at tables for this particular discussion, okay? There are 12 seats shown in that area where the bar is. Four of them are at tables. The concern, Councilman, is that, and there was a lot of discussion about sitting at bars, is that if people are sitting at bars, it's a different...
Excuse me, Lou. I think you referred to me, maybe.
No, no, I'm talking to all of you.
A little inflection there, huh?
Is that there was a greater concern that people sitting at bars could get into some kind of trouble where if they were sitting at tables, it wasn't as likely. So there was a rule that said at one point that you couldn't have any... You couldn't have any seats at all. Then there was a rule that said you can only have six, and that's when this one came into play, six were allowed. Now they're looking for eight at the long thing with seats on one side.
So I think...
There's another four, another four, right across the way from it, two tables worth.
So the point is, no one wants people just sitting there drinking and not eating.
Right. Exactly.
And it is full service. That's one of the things they were trying to do. And actually, just to clarify, the reason it's so long is because they're just trying to combine their soda fountain and their service area with the bar, then that's... So it's still the same... The actual area that serves liquor is actually the same size as it was, and it is full service, so they can eat at the bar.
I'll make a motion to expand the seats from six to eight.
Sorry. No, please. Continue, please.
And here's the reason why. Al, this isn't your grandfather's shack anymore. You're taking it to the new level, and we've gone through this with other restaurants. More and more people want to sit at the bar, have an experience, eat, look at the view. And your restaurant, along with a lot of the others, they bring in a lot of tourism and economic development. It's, I think, it's a very positive as part of making the waterfront vibrant, so I'm in support of expanding the bar seats there.
I'll second that.
Well, the view in this case is the storage building, so just to make that point.
We're going to try and fix that.
Not even opposed to two seats, but it's just giving you a hard time.
And I'd like to just put in my emotion that with the approval of the fire chief and police chief, just make sure that their sign-offs are there as well. I'm mending my motion.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Chief Tomello, is there anything that... Is that acceptable to you in regards to that amendment to the motion that it requires your sign-off?
Yes.
That's a wonderful response. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So part two of this was and is I4. I4 is the modification to the existing lease premises to allow new seasonal tent.
Deborah? Are you going to react to the floor plan? Are you going to accept the floor plan, or are you not ready to do that?
Should we accept that? That was the other part that Andy had suggested.
Thank you, Andy. Yes, please. Go ahead.
Motion to accept the updated floor plan, site plan.
Should we name it something?
I don't know if you want to. Do you want to number it D2C, Lou, for your records, or...
I'll just note that it was received at the meeting.
And also that, but specifically to change where it says new mobile bar and service area for 12, we'll simply say new mobile bar for eight on the plan.
So moved.
And I don't see the... Oh, never mind, I just found it. I wasn't finding the proper...
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Okay, so now we're on that I4, which is about the modification to the existing lease premises. Would you...
So, absolutely.
Please.
Absolutely. Thank you. We are just looking to replace the existing tent that is in disrepair, and then in addition to that, we are looking to add an additional tent just in front of it, to the east of it, where it is located. And I think that's noted on the plan, that tent would be 12 by 24 and would be connected to the other tent.
So would that make the bar and the whole area be under a tent? Is that it?
Exactly.
So the whole area would be tented? Nothing would be, like, sun-exposed?
Exactly. Safer. It's just, I think it's better to have it under the tent.
And it is seasonal. What does seasonal mean? As in, when does it come down and when does it go up?
November 15 to March 1st.
November 15 to March 1st, it is not there.
That is correct. It's so it's...
Not there. Okay.
It wouldn't make a lot of sense to be there at that time, would it? So kind of cold.
If we ripped apart it, then we'd shred it.
Just for clarity. Okay. What questions does this council have? Diane, did you need to weigh in on anything here? Is it as straightforward as it seems?
I think it's pretty straightforward. I think you have a recommendation from the Economic Development Coordinator. They did go to the Historic District Commission, and they will need to go to CRMC, so any approval would be subject to those boards.
To all of those?
Right.
Sorry, there's some of those have already been achieved.
Right. Right. Okay.
I'll make a motion to grant the request to modify the existing lease premises to allow the new seasonal tent.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Jessica.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to reiterate the recommendation that I provided with you. I've been working very closely with Deborah over the past couple of weeks through HDC and CRMC, so have you submitted your CRMC application yet?
We are. That is pending some, just a few additional approvals from HDC, and then those applications go in this week.
Okay. So as soon as that gets in, CRMC will start their review and provide their recommendation, and everything that CRMC recommends will be included in the amendment to the adding the new tent.
What's the typical time that takes for that process? This one doesn't seem so invasive.
Right around four weeks.
Four weeks.
That's what I've heard from CRMC, that her turnaround time right now is four weeks.
Okay.
And it is a two-part application. One is just for, to start the construction and the maintenance on the building, and then the second is for the expansion, which is the ascent for the tent.
Right. So there's a quicker review for the maintenance done in kind for any of the repairs that are done, such as to the existing tent, that it will be repaired in kind, and then there's a new tent going up that will require the longer review by CRMC.
Side note, this is why this council saw the value of having an economic development coordinator to shepherd existing businesses and new businesses through what is a arduous puzzle.
Dante.
So it was a puzzle for us, and we're just at the end here, so. So we have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any other discussion?
I just want, by way of information as well, I just wanted to let the council know. The Historic District Commission did approve most of this, including the big one, the additional tent. There are a couple of details regarding pavers and flooring and the fence design, which actually they're going to have a site visit tomorrow morning on that, so...
Would these be more of an ancillary item?
Exactly, yes. But they have already specifically approved the design for the new tent, cover on the existing one, the upgrade of the existing tent, and the second tent.
So it sounds like you're three-quarters of the way there. Beautiful. All right. Chief, you're killing me here. Go ahead.
Just a quick note. I think it looks good, but we're certainly here to work with you with a couple of things. The tent does become an issue when it's over a certain amount of days, as far as whether it's just considered a tent or now a quasi-permanent structure in the fire code. So I just recommend stop by and see us at the office, so we can help you through it and, you know, get everything squared away for you.
I joke, but this is really important, so... And this is the time that if there's, you know, catching it early, and thank you for doing that. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Welcome back, Councilman.
Yes, it's good to be back. The next item is the petition of Robert Kraft, 306 Rumstick Road, Barrington, regarding his request to repeal recently passed ordinance 2016-15, which provided for a no parking space directly across from the driveway leading to 6 Francis Street.
Is Mr... I'm sorry.
You have the recommendation of the Town Administrator and Chief of Police to deny, and also a copy of the adopted ordinance is provided.
Is Mr. Kraft here? No. Okay. What's the pleasure of this council?
Make a motion based on all the recommendations to deny the repeal of the ordinance 2016-15, no parking space directly across from driveway leading to 6 Francis Street, adopted in 1216.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item has been withdrawn at the request of the petitioner. That's item F2. And the following one, F3, is the petition of Robert H. Thurber, 15 Cook Street, requests council consideration for an accessible parking space in front of his residence. You have a letter of support by the property owner and the recommendation of the Town Administrator and Chief of Police to approve.
Make a motion, this constitutes a first reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Following is the annual request from the pastor of Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church to use the town common for their annual church feast. The actual use is from July 10th through 18th. Some of that is set up and break down. And it's also, there was a little bit of confusion in the application, but I added in the, in the agenda item that because of past practice, they are also seeking council permission for alcoholic beverage sale and service and it is per their past practice. You have the recommendations of town administrator, chief of police and director of Parks and Recreation all to approve.
I move that we approve the, the request.
I'll second and also a discussion with Father DeZino and also the director of Parks and Recreation for my colleagues to no contingent upon that. That policy through the clerk in which he's alluding to, other than past practice, will be on file through Our Lady of Mount Carmel as well.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is the first item in your appointment section. This is item, excuse me, G1A and that's from the fire chief regarding special constables' fire police.
Motion to, yep, to approve the 2017 special constable list provided by the fire chief.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And G1B, there is Recreation Board, two full members, one auxiliary member with terms to expire in February 2020. You have Edward Quinn, the, of 38 Anchorage Court, who's currently sits as a full member, asking to be reappointed. And you also have the, the request of Donald Squires, who is the second auxiliary member to seek, also seeks reappointment. The, the third person we had not heard from, but I must assume that she wishes to continue. And if you want to just, Nancy Horn. You haven't heard that she doesn't want to, right? I think there might be a little confusion on getting back the application, so if, if you want to reappoint her based upon the receipt of an application, that would be suitable.
I think we should appoint Nancy Horn upon receipt of the application, Ed, Edward Quinn, both of those as full members and Donnie Squires as the auxiliary member.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is item G1C. This is Capital Project Commission. There is one position available for alternate member. You have the application of Aaron Lay of 3 Belvedia Drive, who is interested in being appointed to that position.
Motion to schedule an interview with Mr. Lay for the Capital Projects Commission.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think in light of his resume and the completeness of it and being one applicant, I believe we could just move to appoint Mr. Lay.
We don't ever do that. We don't do that, I mean, I mean, I've.
Yes, you have. I know where you're going with it.
Well, no, if, if, if we know the person or if they've been involved before, I know he ran for office. I mean, I don't, I just, all I'm saying is that it's, it's fine, except that it, it just opens that door. So we just have to be mindful if another case comes along that's similar that we have done this in the past, so.
I just agree that if it was a past member that was already interviewed through other boards, but past practice has that if they were never served on a board that, I just think it might open up a door that we want to do an interview and do the process accordingly. And I agree, his resume is extensive. Others that come before us, just as Monday night, were very extensive in its own right. It's no disregard or disrespect to any applicant. We appreciate them coming, but I just think amongst all of us, this, a five-member panel of a council, maybe some counselors would want that right for an interview.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
In favor of what?
The motion was to set up and appoint, excuse me, an interview.
An interview, yeah.
Okay, okay.
That was that motion, so I'll ask that again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is Christmas Festival Committee. This is item G1D. You have the applications of Daniella Lopes of 87 Perry Street and Michael S. Marchesi of 10 Monterey Drive, both seeking council consideration for appointment.
Motion to approve and submit to the Christmas Festival Committee, Daniella Lopes and Michael Marchesi.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is the part of the show that I say thank you to the boards and commissions that take their time, efforts and energies out of their own personal life to give back to the community, specifically the Christmas Festival Committee. I went to one of their meetings recently. If you're interested in that or any other of the boards, the commitment level is not that much for time, but the feeling that you will get in your heart for giving back to the community is certainly worth it. And regardless of what you do, we appreciate the time, effort and energy of our boards and commissions. Thank you.
Excellent, yeah.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item H1. This is continued from November 16th. This has to do with Councilman Stewart's request for an update on possible Ripta high-speed ferry stop in Bristol.
So, talking with the harbor master and discussions upstate, it's an active conversation of what their forecast is for 2017 with that high-speed ferry to Newport and any possibilities of any other further stops. So I think the crucial moment for the town of Bristol is with our ongoing projects and conversations along our waterfront, in tandem with our harbor master, is probably to attend the meetings upstate when these conversations start to take place, I would imagine, real soon, of the funding mechanism along with any possibilities of our conversation to be part of that. And I would just, you know, invite the administrator and, and the harbor master and maybe myself or anybody else interested to attend those meetings so we could be part of, and hear those conversations, to see where we can possibly present our case and also with what we have to provide. So, I think it's two parts that are integral for this service, if it's going to be feasible. So, again, I would just like to continue this probably to the end of April. Greg?
Sure. I, I have an email out to her and nothing's really changed. They're, they're working on securing the, for this year. I told her we're interested in any meetings and I'm waiting for a response back from that email.
Yeah, which I anticipate real soon because I'm sure they have to do their legwork before the summer starts, so.
I'm sure. I know they're interested in renewing the contract, so.
Yeah.
So they have, the state has the money to continue the, to continue the ferry in general?
She didn't, she didn't allude to that.
I saw the conversation.
But that's what it is, yeah, that's what it is.
But I think at those meetings, even at their level of what they're doing, I think we should be in attendance, just so we could be proactive and they could see our interest.
Yes. Well, they know we're interested. I mail her, email her about once a month, so she knows we're, we're interested in having them here, so.
So, Ed, your motion would be to continue this, the, our last meeting?
Either the end of April, wherever that may lie, or if it falls into the, the 26th is fine, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is, excuse me, regarding the matter of town of Bristol and A&R Marine. This was continued, or rather, was referred to the town administrator on, at our, at your last meeting and he has something to report.
Mr. Administrator.
Good evening. I'd like to report that we're doing well with our negotiations between Portsmouth, Prudence Islanders, the town government, the administrative branch anyway, and A&R Marine. We've drafted a new lease, which is, from what we are hearing, something that the people of Portsmouth were looking for, which would have extended the terms between Bristol and A&R Marine to 15 years. We were able to, last Monday, the 13th, to, we encouraged Portsmouth to request funding from their people to help us with the cost of the repair on the west end of the dock. That's where the ramp is. So they, they agreed to appropriate $70,000, which should be a third of the cost for the repair. So we, we worked hard on, on getting that deal together. Under, I think it's under our new business, we have a memorandum that they would like us to go forward with and I can pass that out to you.
Actually, you know what we could do here is if we could get a motion to combine that together, it would seem very appropriate.
That'd be great. Let me, let me pass it over to you.
And we are combining. I thought that should have been more specific.
We're doing H2 and I1.
Other new business, I'm looking for it.
H2.
I, H2 and I1, let's combine those.
Motion to combine H2 and I1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I guess you can do that now.
Okay. And one of the reasons why I had this on under old business, at this point in time, we're ready to move and, and put the project out to bid, so we're looking for authorization for an expenditure. How it'll work is the town would obviously front the project. It is our dock and we're securing commitments for the reimbursement. The one from Portsmouth, we'll get that commitment once the honorable counsel approves that memorandum. The memorandum pretty much says that we will be committed to a ferry service for the next 15 years on the Prudence Island dock that will serve the, Prudence Island. And in, in return, the town of Portsmouth will provide $70,000, up to $70,000 towards repairs of the dock. The only other thing I would ask is that, you know, we, you allow me to sign that memorandum so I can get it back to Portsmouth and then authorize me to go out to bid. So, we would need a funding source and our treasurer could, could help you with that, where that money would be coming from.
So, I have a couple of questions about the lease, but Julie, could you speak to us about what that funding source might be?
Sure. So, as we're pulling together our, our upcoming bond issue, which will hopefully have the refunding and some new money in it, what I would recommend is that we borrow for taxable municipal bonds for a portion of that issue, which we'll continue to talk about as we're pulling our next projects together. And so I would recommend that we have our bond counsel draft a reimbursement resolution in advance so that we can use our own funds ahead of the issue. And then we probably, to be on the safe side, would want to put some language in the bid documents to say contingent, that we would be awarding the bid contingent upon the agreements being in place with Portsmouth and A&R if they were not already in place.
Okay. So we would, we would use our own money and then pay ourselves back when the bond is completed?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
The last piece to this is the commitment from A&R, which is in the draft lease that is in the solicitor's hands at this point, but the March 15th meeting, I'll be presenting that to you and that will be before any bids are opened up. But the, the president of A&R Marine is here, Steve Anteia, and if you have any questions of him and if you'd like to get a verbal commitment from him, he is here.
Steve, did our solicitor draft this up?
The Portsmouth solicitor drafted it. Our solicitor has a copy of it and he reviewed it.
And he's reviewed it.
Andy, you're. I have no doubt the administrator is telling us everything we need to know. I just want to make sure that you.
Yes, for, for the record.
Didn't want to add your yes and no to that one that you love to do.
For your record, the, yes, the, we reviewed it and I'm fine with it. I guess.
I had asked, I wanted to make sure that, I have a concern and it's a, it's a minor one, but I want to make sure that there's language in here that says if, for great reasons of Portsmouth, they, they come into, I don't know, federal dollars and they want to move the ferry landing and A&R is amenable to it, that, that we, that after six months of non-use, that it reverts back to the town, this, this agreement would be null and void at that point in time.
That's correct.
A reasonable time. And I don't think that'll happen, but just in case, I don't want to not be able to use it.
No, I think, I think that's good, but I don't know, Portsmouth hasn't seen that yet, so I don't think it'll be a problem with them, since it's something.
And again, I'm amenable to a reasonable time, personally.
Basically, yeah, no, I think it's fine. It sets forth the tripartite agreement between Portsmouth and Bristol and A&R Marine for everyone's benefit.
Well, it looks like line three, Vice Chair just pointed out to me that my fears have been abated. It actually is in an agreement. Says in the event of the town of Portsmouth and A&R Marine no longer wish to have the ferry service in Bristol, the town may after six months period opt out of this agreement.
Yeah.
So, I'm out. That's good.
My only question is for the initial term ending on September of 2019, with the option to extend the lease for additional five years of 2024. And in this memorandum, it stipulates exactly that Portsmouth will agree to that $70,000 towards the repairs. So is that in this memorandum that will be until 2019? The point of my question is going forward, if this service, this service has been here for how many years in Bristol for Portsmouth? And going forward, is this all Portsmouth is going to agree to in a memorandum with A&R with our long-term relationship in Bristol? Or is there further, is there a way we can do wording that if there is any more negotiation with Portsmouth, like the chairman said, of due responsibility, even though that they're contributing now, but in the future, if there is more needs for the town of Bristol going forward, where does that leave us in this memorandum with Portsmouth?
So after 15 years, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm just specifying and they're just agreeing to $70,000 in general and then they're almost walking away of that's what we're going to give you. But in the future of Bristol, if we continue with this year after year with a long-term relationship, and, and where are they part of that, outside of that? You know, they might just say, well, we gave you $70,000 part of that memorandum, that, that's all, you know?
It's for, and I can tell you, it was some hard negotiating back and forth. It wasn't easy, but we came to an agreement that for the next 15 years, Portsmouth will provide $70,000 into a Bristol dock repair. That's the best I could do with my counterparts in Portsmouth. For the next 15 years, we're not going to ask them for any more money.
So it is a $70,000 for 15?
$70,000 for 15 years.
So at 15 years and a day, we need to.
We could start all over again. We could start all over again.
Well, I think it's good that you got them to get the $70,000.
Does that respond to your concerns?
I'm just, where is it, 15 years? I know even if we extend, it's 2024.
It's in number two. The beginning of the, it's like a preamble at the front and it just explains that we have a current lease with them until 2024. That's a preamble, but the actual.
Oh, including 15 years from date of the agreement, I see.
That's what, that's what the administrator provided, has provided the terms to me that I'll be doing a lease amendment, which will be providing that extension for the, the option for the extra 15 years.
Okay. I just wanted to just let my colleagues know that for 15 years going forward, that that's all they're going to contribute.
Well, that's good, but they never contributed anything.
And I'm not saying it's not a good negotiation. I'm just, I want everyone to be aware of that.
But the last 100 years, they never contributed anything.
All right, that was a rough.
It's good, good job, Stephen, getting the, getting something, at least because we have that immediate problem that we need to, to resolve.
Thank you.
In the preamble, in, in the preamble, it talks about the existing lease, which is an agreement between the town of Bristol and A&R, that, as it is today, is an agreement that both A&R and the town of Bristol will mutually share and in the cost of implementing over a million dollars in repairs currently. We're talking about a new lease that might change that, but currently, A&R has agreed to share in the costs of a $1.3 million repair to that dock. What the repairs are talking about now is about a $210,000 repair, a small repair, when you take into context everything that needs to get done. We're talking about the west wall, specific to the use of the ferry, not the north wall, which is a huge public safety issue, almost as grave an issue as the ferry landing itself. So, that's today and it's saying that Portsmouth is only agreeing to contribute $70,000 towards the repairs in Exhibit A. Exhibit A isn't here, so I'm assuming that's just the west end.
It is.
And so, for the next 15 years, we're going to be challenged with the rest, the million dollars. And we're saying that Portsmouth is free and clear. In the event, anything comes up, we're hoping that this $210,000 repair to the west end is going to last 15 years. We don't know that. So, what if in 10 years, the repair that's done now, where we have a significant event or sea level rise comes and we need to make significant modifications to the dock? Maybe raise the whole dock two feet so that we can provide service? Portsmouth is done, they spent $70,000? I'm not quite sure that that's a gamble I'd want to take. And it further says that, well, no further costs relating to the repairs will be, will be expected from the town of Bristol. I'm not quite sure I want to let them off the hook that easy.
I wonder if like on the specific, you know, you gave a maybe extreme example of the sea level rise or an emergency, you know, hurricane type of thing. If there is, and Andy would know this, is some language that in an extreme event would occur that, that we would go back to them to discuss, you know, rather than leave it at this is it for those 15 years, I'm not sure you're going to get anything more for just regular repairs, because some of that is our property and, you know, there's, I could see their point where it may or may not be related directly to ferrying people back and forth, but I do think in some sort of extreme dire situation.
Catastrophic event.
Yeah, something like that. If there's a way to put some language in there that we could at least revisit negotiations with them on that topic.
You know, by no means do I think we should not agree to offering the dock or making it available to, for ferry service for 15 years, even longer. I think we absolutely should work hard to make sure that the ferry is there for 15 years and longer. I just think the issue is the financial obligation that is going to continue and the risk that's there. And, and I think one more thing was that it says that we will make the same street dock and all improvements and facilities thereon available for the ferry. We're talking about specific repairs for the west end that are currently just used for the ferry. And then we're asked to, in the future, make the whole dock, all of the facilities available. So, I think we need to continue to refer to Exhibit A, I'm assuming which delineates just the west end for ferry, not the whole dock, all the premises forever to Prudence. I think we've got to be careful to make sure we preserve the uses for other commercial purposes.
So, that, that's why I brought this up, because, yes, for Exhibit A, it's, it's specified and the $70,000, it was a very good negotiation. But again, if the Portsmouth solicitor did this, number one, why did he pick 15 years? And number two, is there a safeguard of wording that Portsmouth would be amenable to, such as the ideas that were set forth by my colleagues of, you know, this is a relationship that these conversations, which you have done very good with, but, you know, and we have certain responsibilities, as Councilwoman Porella said, with our own property, but, you know, to just sign off without having, you know, having a closed door versus an open door going forward, not necessarily, necessarily we're going to use it, but I, I think that's our concern.
I understand. I think it's important that we lay out the history here, okay? We elected to purchase this dock and at the time we knew it needed 1.67. Okay, we elected to purchase this dock and at the time we knew it needed 1.67 million dollars worth of repairs when we purchased it four years ago. It sat there as a liability for four years. The town of Portsmouth, when I first met with them, said, no, we're not paying for anything. We're kind of caught in a bad spot right now and we're either going to allow the dock to continue to operate or we're going to shut it down. But I can tell you, it's not safe and we're either going to repair that west end and take the $70,000 or I believe the deal is going to be off. The ferry is regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. They don't have an operating budget to, 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 uh, to come up with, uh, 500 or 700,000 dollars that is going to be required. So, it may be a game changer as far as keeping the ferry here. It wasn't as easy as it sounds and we haven't been taking this lightly, but I can tell you, we've made more progress in the last two months than you've probably seen in four years. We need to get the ramp fixed and this is the way we can do it. If you don't want to do it, then ultimately we're going to have to shut the ramp down.
I think that we should do it. The only thing that I, I think, I think you're right, Stephen, that we bought this for many reasons. And, um, some of those reasons, not only to keep the ferry service here, because that is a benefit to businesses and so forth, but because if it went on the open market, it could become a 35-foot hotel in the middle of our waterfront. So, I mean, there's lots of reasons why we have purchased properties, um, and many of them are to save them from alternatives happening around us without our control. I think we know what those are and I think we have to work to be able to make those repairs. I think that, you know, Portsmouth should pay something. I guess my biggest issue right now, and I think you're right, has been more progress in getting them to come to the 70, 70,000 than it has been in a long time. So, I think the only thing that was raised here tonight that I hadn't maybe thought about, yeah, it would be nice to get them 70,000 every two years. I'm not sure it's going to happen. Um, I'm pretty sure it's not going to happen. But I do think in a catastrophic event that was raised, I mean, I think that's something that there could probably be like very simple language that could be, that the, our attorneys, that both solicitors could agree to, that, we're not asking them to pay for anything, because hopefully insurance and so forth would pay for some of that. But in the event that they need to be, open that negotiation again, that that would be able to be done. That's my, that's basically what I'm asking or referencing.
Did they give a reason for, uh, one of my questions, did they give a reason for the 15 years? Part of the work?
It has to be, it has to be cost-effective. They have to justify it to their taxpayers.
Yeah, I think as we do, and I think, you know, the property was bought concurrent with the lease negotiations. And the property was bought knowing that the 1.4 million dollars in repairs were needed. And the lease was negotiated knowing that, and that's why the terms of the lease talk about sharing in that cost. And, um, for the whole cost, the 1.3, not just the 2.1. So, and I know we're getting away from that, but again, after the dust all settles, after the end, the 2.1, or the 210 is spent, the town of Bristol is going to be on the hook for the rest. And I just think that the initial intent was to buy it, have a lease, a tenant, a partner that's going to share in the investment. And the terms of the lease, the payment, the thousand dollars a month, which I believe is below market value, took into account the future investment, the shared 1.4 million dollar investment down the road. I do agree that the lease should be longer so you can spread across 15 years potentially, 20 years, the amount of capital that you're going to have to put in and we're going to have to put in.
But that's A and R. You're talking about A and R, but what about, what, what about with Portsmouth? Like, I don't, I think it's true.
Again, there's no obligation for Portsmouth to put it in. The town of Bristol has an obligation to get this ramp fixed and work with A and R. I do believe that it is appropriate to ask Portsmouth for a contribution. But I would rather not take their contribution to be able to go back to them in a, in a time of emergency than to take 70,000 and say we could never go back to them. I'd rather just spend the money with the, and preserve the right to go back to the town of Portsmouth when we need potentially 500 if we're going to keep this in operation.
Um, yeah, I'm Stephen Anteia, President of A and R Marine on Fifth Foul Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Tiska, the, we're trying to prevent a catastrophic event. We don't want to wait for a catastrophic event. The dock right now, you know, as Mr. Contente, you know, expressed right clearly, is in really bad shape. So, you're in a position right now. You own the dock, you have a responsibility to fix it. You have two willing participants to share a third of the cost and we're trying to prevent a catastrophe, prevent that dock from completely falling into the, you know, I'm, I'm constantly limiting the weight of the trucks going across that. So, you know, I.
We should do it right away, but I don't want to not.
You should do it right now. I mean.
I do it right now, but I don't want to give, let them off the hook for 15 years. You should do it right now. But to say that Portsmouth is off the hook for 15 years and you and I are on the hook, I don't think it's fair.
They're not getting revenue from it. They, you're getting fishing boats and, you know, all the revenue and all the benefits that they don't, they don't get. I mean, I'm, I'm, you're putting me in a position of arguing for the town of Portsmouth, but, you know, I, I, if I were them, I would say, we're putting in the money. We're putting in the money on the part that we use, right, for our operation and our people. I think a third is more than fair, you know, based on the three parties. The timing is now. I mean, if you don't do it now, like Mr. Contente said, we're going to shut, it's going to be shut down. And you're going into the summer season with, you know, a significant benefit to the town for people coming and shopping and buying and, you know, you've got to look, the town of Bristol has to look for what the benefit is for the town of Bristol for the rest of that dock, you know, and what kind of money they want to put into it and what they want to use it for. That's your responsibility. You know, it's not Portsmouth and it's not A and R, so.
Mr. Anteia, with all due respect of your comment of Portsmouth not generating any revenue, but yet in their clause, whereas Portsmouth has strong governmental interest in ensuring a sufficient and dependable ferry service, the ferry service that lands right here in Bristol to and from Prudence Island, which is a lifeline service upon which thousands of residents and visitors to Prudence Island depend, meeting basic needs. I, I would believe in, from my position, that is a monetary value for those Portsmouth residents. And I, I don't think I would find anyone to disagree with that. It's just how you're justifying about their position on their responsibility of what is it in for them for revenue as a town of Portsmouth or versus how they value their residents and a service that is needed for their residents. That's, that's.
Their participation of one-third reflects that.
So, what we're going to do, I'm going to, actually, I'm going to stop this for a second.
Sorry.
Okay. Couple of things. First off, like, let's talk about what we agree on. Okay, let's do that. First off, I haven't heard anybody object to catastrophic added to the equation in the language. It seems very appropriate. It seems reasonable. This is not paint and paper. It's catastrophic.
Can I just make a, a, a quick thing for that, a notation to that though, Nathan? Because Andy is taught, or somebody just, you, I mean, I'm sorry, you just mentioned that catastrophic is, is the repair right this minute. I'm talking about a significant weather-related event or hurricane type of thing.
After repaired.
Right. I've been talking about that it may collapse. I'm talking about a, like a weather-related event.
So, for clarity to that point, so am I. So, we'll, we'll use hurricane as an example. And that assumes that the dock has then, since been repaired and then something happens to it. I do agree, and I think we all do, that Andy brought up a good point about Exhibit A, is where is the responsibility in? It encompassed the whole dock. It would seem very, they're contributing to a repair that is just at the end and, and directly connected to A and R and, and ferry transport. It would seem that these, this language would be specific to that area. That, it can't be the whole thing, um, because they're not responsible to pay for. We are, so, we can't. If we sign this, we're saying that we're going to do the whole thing. And I'm not sure, is there a timeline in there? But it seems very appropriate on that.
We, in our capital budget, I think we had it for next year, the north, the north side. And remember, that north side is predominantly our fishing boats there. You know, and, and we've got to be reasonable about this. We've purchased, we purchased this dock, knowing that we're going to have to spend money on it. And now, because we're at the point where it's about to fail, we're going to hold the, the town of Portsmouth and Prudence Island as hostage. I don't, I don't really think that's the way we should be operating. Uh, we own it. It's our property. We need to get it fixed. We're doing the best we can to get help to get that done, but it's all about reasonableness. That north wall has very limited use. In fact, if we have the incoming and outgoing vehicles from the ferry travel through the middle of the dock, they don't even have to use the north wall. So, their, their use of that north wall, it's going to be very hard to get the town of Portsmouth, and we've tried already. They don't want to hear it. And I don't, in, in a way, I don't blame them. If the shoes were on the other, other feet, I would feel the same way. I think we're doing pretty good with this deal. It's the ramp. It's the west end of the dock that's used daily for the operations of the ferry. We're splitting it three ways. The rest of the dock, as Councilwoman Porella said, there's other uses of the dock. It's open space. People trans, uh, walk across it. We have other uses for it. Our fishermen are using it. So, we can't, we can't ask Portsmouth and A and R Marina pay for the north end of the wall and then we're, we're renting it out and getting dock, dock space out of it. It just does, it's not, it's not reasonable.
So, let me finish.
The administration did the very best.
Mr. I'm going to finish my summary. Okay, so, I agree. You've made some great points. I think there's all been some great points here. I'm actually, I, I believe that the 70,000, I'm sorry, up to 70,000, which was a third, whatever the bill is actually, seems quite appropriate to me for the repair here. I recently went up to the State House and met with the Director of DOT and a few other people, including Julie Oakley, who represents intermodal funds, which is federal dollars that, if you're not familiar, I wasn't, means from going from a bus to a car to a train to a bike, it's intermodal. There is the potential, and no, by no means am I suggesting we should put our hats on this one, that there may be, and actually quite, quite high potential, that there may be grant monies available to the towns, to the towns. And I make that very specific there, that we may be able to recoup some of our costs in our, in no way, shape or form, I suggest that we should make our decisions based off maybe getting this money, but we should keep that in our heads. But I do believe that Portsmouth is giving towards this, uh, a third of what is, in my opinion, is the appropriate part that they should be paying. I don't think, I don't have a problem with paying for the north side. I don't want to. But I do believe that's, in my head, that's Bristol's responsibility. As it pertains to A and R Marine and what, more specifically, I mean, the ferry, that area, I think this document should be very specific to. It shouldn't include the north side. They, Portsmouth will not tell us what to do with that, and I won't sign anything that does. But they shouldn't, and I don't think it has anything to do with that. I want to make sure, I think everybody does, that the ferry has got safe transport out of there and the repair is done expeditiously. So, I'm okay with, with almost all of this, with just a couple of adjustments to it personally.
Can I make a motion with a couple of adjustments?
Of course you can.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
All right. So, I make a motion to accept this draft with two adjustments to number two under the now or therefore section. Those adjustments would be, um, that the, the sentence where, uh, upon where the termination of A and R lease, um, upon the termination of A and R's lease, the Thame Street Dock and all improvements and facilities thereon shall be available for a comparable ferry. I think that should be changed to Exhibit A, the area defined in Exhibit A, not the entire Thame Street Dock. So, that that area would continue to be available for a ferry service. The second change is the last sentence of number two, which I'd like to strike. And that sentence is, no further costs relating to repairs to the Thame Street Dock are expected from the town of Portsmouth.
So, there's a motion. You heard all of that. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
May I just clarify, is, is this also going to include, you're going to want a language about catastrophic event, act of God, that the parties agree to negotiate in good faith?
Absolutely. I appreciate that. I would like to amend my motion to include, in the event of catastrophic damage to the dock, that the town of Portsmouth will work in good faith with the town of Bristol to remedy and make the ferry available for, the dock available for ferry, ferry service as soon as possible.
So, can I just ask, are you suggesting then this whole paragraph, so this whole thing would be just about the west end in the ferry area?
Right.
Yes, Exhibit A.
So, if you're, so the, so if you're striking no further costs relating to repairs of, of Thame Street Dock, it is, if that were to be, I know you're striking it, you're suggesting, but it would basically be, if that's what this was in the first place, would be no further costs relating to the, the repairs of the west end ferry service area of the dock.
Or the northeast, or the northeast.
I understand, I know, I understand. I just like making sure that that was what he's saying.
That's correct.
I, I just have one concern. One of their concerns was that we're going to keep hitting them up every year or two for repairs within that Exhibit A area. Um, and that's, that's why that clause, no further costs relating to repairs.
But Mr. Anteia, it would seem, and I'm going to take some of our negotiating power away here, but they can just say no, right?
They don't have, there's no obligation for them to participate. We can ask, but they can say no.
Because they can't make them do it.
Say no out of the box. Or they, we shouldn't allow them to say no out of the box.
Okay, okay.
It seems like we're trying to kick the can down the road here a little bit. You know, we've got one thing in front of us right now, which is the repair to that dock and the west side. I understand you've got, you own it, you've got concerns about further repairs, but the, I caution you to be careful about tying that into what we're doing right now. We're already late, you know, with fixing that. We want to, like I said, we're, we worry, you know, Kevin even said it keeps them up at night, you know? We go over that ramp. It's severely deteriorated. We want to fix it now. So, don't.
We're not kicking the can. We want, we want to fix it now.
You need to decide right now. We have.
I think we're agreeing to spend $70,000 right now, one at a time.
Mr. Anteia, those changes, I believe, address exactly addressing what you're, you're discussing with that Exhibit A and that west end and that ramp.
We're agreeing to spend the $70,000 and contribute today, now, with my motion. All we're, all we're asked, all I'm asking to do is that we do not, um, remove the ability to ask Portsmouth for further, um, partnership.
But what if, what if they say no?
It's not contingent upon them agreeing to that. Your, your vote now is not contingent upon them agreeing to that language. Okay, great. All right, I misunderstood that. Thank you.
We're moving forward.
What if they decide they're not going to agree to this with that language stricken? Do we, do they come back or do we still move forward? Or what, what is the option here?
So, your question is, if they say no and the 70,000 disappears, what's our next step? Is that what you just asked?
Well, hopefully, they're not going to say, no, the 70,000 is not going to disappear. They're going to say, no, I'm not going to agree to this, while the 70,000 would, because I want that no further costs relating language in, which is probably something we might do if, if it was on the other foot, as you would say. I mean, I don't agree with the earlier point that we should just pay the whole bill now so we don't ever have to go back to them. Because we all know that councils and things change and if you've got an option of 70,000 right now.
I didn't hear that point. I'm sorry. I didn't hear that we wanted to pay it all upfront.
Andy had said that he would rather just pay it than to not have the option.
I apologize. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Please.
I'm saying that councils change and whatever. I think that there is a, you've got a willing partner to get that money now. That may not be there with a new council in a couple of years. And so, I wouldn't risk that aspect of it because things change pretty quick in politics and they may have zero interest in it.
Andy, can I get your expert opinion on that, what Mary is referring to?
Well.
With regards to.
Yeah, what I would suggest, um, is, as was suggested, limit, so we define it so that we're limiting this memorandum to the west end of the dock. We'll have that area, which is essentially the, the west end, the lease held area. That's what we're, they're going to limit this agreement to. And as far as the specific language in number two, again, you know, we, we can define that area, the Thame Street Dock. So, it's talking about the defined area and so forth that will be available for the ferry service. And I do the same thing with the last sentence. Instead of striking out, no further costs relating to repairs of the Thame Street Dock are expected, no further costs relating to the repairs of the west end of the Thame Street Dock are expected.
See, that right there, to me, is a massive difference that I would be on board with, as that I could say yes to, as long as it's very specific. I, that, that we're saying that we're not going to go back to Portsmouth for these repairs and what we're talking about for the next 15 years, for this area that we speak with.
Right.
And that, as, as we move forward, if there's other things, I don't think we're going to them anyway.
And also to address Councilman Tiska's concern, I think I would have something in here that, and maybe in the same paragraph with talking about catastrophic damage, but also, or maybe a separate one, that Bristol, nothing in this agreement is going to affect Bristol and A and R's, you know, future responsibilities with respect to repairs to the rest of the dock. We've got the lease there. That whole lease is very vague about, you know, what will be done and whatnot. And we're not going to solve that tonight, but we're saying, solving this problem is what we're going to do tonight and we'll, we will address that problem in the future. Maybe there'll be federal funds, maybe there won't, maybe, who knows what will happen, but that we would deal with that at a future time. And we don't say anything. And, we don't say anything about whether we'd ask Portsmouth to contribute or not, but we don't say that we, we don't promise not to ask them to contribute.
Okay. Andy, does that, how does that-
I just want, a point of clarification, that, what we're talking about too, and I think this might help you, Mr. Anteja, is, um, we're not having a discussion about, tonight, right now, about us spending the seventy thousand dollars. All we're doing is approving a draft which is agreeing on the town, the town of Portsmouth spending seventy thousand dollars. Is that an anticipated discussion soon on our agenda, so that we can move this along? Where is that, uh, request stand?
Yeah, that was next.
That was next.
We combine the two, so we're, we would have two motions as part of this discussion.
So, this west end really is exclusive for your uses, or, I know there's some discussion to have shared use for that west end. Is this, for the next, for the term of the lease, is this for your exclusive use?
We talked to Greg and, and Mr. Cantente about, and with my captain, Ethan Rossi, about how that would come about, the shared use of the end. Hovermaster has some concerns about the, the type of vessel and the operator of that vessel not being familiar with that particular area, and bringing their boats in and out, especially big ones. And then, we have some concerns about the design of the boat, that ramp and gallows is designed specifically for, you know, the Bonner and the, and the Prudence Ferry, so it would be very restrictive as to what we would do. We agreed to talk about it going forward, we didn't agree to put any specific language in there about it.
Okay. So, um, these repairs to the west end, I'm just wondering, is it, um, anticipated that these repairs will last, uh, for fifteen years?
Oh, yeah, well, you know, I mean, they, they're built to a certain engineering standard, you know, that, that par, uh, designed for the town of Bristol, and, you know, the, the materials are specified, the construction methods are specified.
So, we shouldn't expect any more cost for the next fifteen years? The town of Bristol either, on this west end?
On our part of it, I don't anticipate any additional costs. This is the last piece of infrastructure that we need, you know, A&R needs to, to finish off this, this service that we have. You know, we signed, we signed the lease with Bristol three years ago, we thought it would be done, you know, long before now, and we've been really, you know, biting our fingernails about that condition of it, and, you know, it's gotta be done now.
We need to make it safe.
Great news is that we all agree on that. So, there is one hundred percent agreement there. So, we have a motion out there, Andy, that I'm, I'm asking, do you wanna continue with that motion, which is, that was seconded, and we can vote on it? Or is there, from this additional discussion, is there anything that you wanted to change?
So, Mr. Solicitor, are you suggesting that we change, instead of striking the last sentence, um, no, changing it to no further costs relating to the repairs of the areas, the, the leased premises or Exhibit A are expected from the town of Portsmouth?
Right, well, just, sorry. Just to be specific, as far as to how I would craft it, I would probably change the fourth whereas paragraph to just, where it talks about known as the Thane Street Dock, I would change that paragraph to define the Thane Street Dock as just the west end of it, right there. Then we can leave the words Thane Street Dock throughout the rest of it.
Change it to Prudence. I wouldn't call it the New Some, that's a, that's a, Prudence Dock.
Yeah, I should think we should, in no place refer to it as a Thane Street Dock. I think that's, in nowhere else in the town, do we refer to that?
Okay, all right, so we'll call it the, the ferry landing, or?
We call it the leased portion, maybe.
Sounds like we're on the same page on that, but move forward.
Right.
So, go ahead. Andy?
So, with that, so, are you suggesting that that last sentence be changed, Mr. Solicitor?
The last sentence of paragraph two?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I would say, I, I'm suggesting that leave it in, because I think it, from, from the administrator and just listening to the discussion, I think it's important to the town of Portsmouth that they wanna have it there, but, so it's, we, we only change that Thane Street Dock portion to whatever we define it as, whether it's ferry landing or leased premises, we change it to that, um, but leave the, leave the no further cost, um, there, only limiting it to that.
How about no further costs related to the repairs to the leased premises Exhibit As are expected from, um, the town of Portsmouth, um, common, not excluding A&R Marine?
Well, I, I just would put a separate, I just put a separate para- I would put a separate paragraph in, um, probably the whereas, talking, saying that, that, that this doesn't have any impact on the responsibilities between Bristol and A&R. I'm, I'm more li- I, I more wanna do that out of these one, two, three, which I think are the most important thing to them.
And to us.
Right, and, and, well, no, it's important to you, the other thing, but I put that in the whereas, just to make it clear that it's not affecting those other elements, rather than leaving it blank.
Perfect.
Andy, does that address some, or most?
Yeah, again, um, my motion does include striking that. I do think that, um, there is no harm in preserving the ability to go back and ask. Um, I think it is bold to ask that we, um, we move that right, um, to ask, but I do understand the urgency in that of moving this along. So, I leave the motion as it stands to strike that, um, for consideration.
So, does everybody understand that?
Well, I got the clarity that their responsibility, and, and they're, they're willing to do this, is for what they see fit of that is, they have a, you know, for their piece of that dock, outside the scope of what the town of Bristol is liable for on our own. The, this wording would say that there is an opportunity to go back if there was need be a catastrophic event in Exhibit A or the west wall going forward, but more to the fact that if there are future ascertainable grants or funding mechanisms, because we're partnered with a, a same, like business, um, with both interests concerning this ramp with the ferry service, um, I, I think we always wanna leave that door open on a state and federal level of not just Bristol going after funds, but also having Portsmouth, and, because if they have that possibility to get those funds, it's not really coming from their taxpayers, it's just they would be helping, uh, this initiative out going forward of any other needs that might have to be addressed.
Mr. Chairman?
But I think that goes to something else. I think that goes to a separate paragraph that says, in the event that intermodal funds or something else, or the potential for grant or collaboration comes about, you know, we would partner with Portsmouth to make the best use of those application. I mean, I don't know what the wording would be, but to me, I don't think it goes to that paragraph, what you're saying on that.
Well, either way, how you wanna dice it, yeah, Mary, it's just that it gives us that ample opportunity. It doesn't have to be part of that paragraph, as long as we're addressing it.
I'm just trying to figure out like-
I think I have something.
One second.
Yep.
Please, Kevin?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to clarify a point that Councilwoman Perella had brought up early on, and that was a catastrophic event. I think the catastrophic event that we're, we're discussing here is not what A&R considers a catastrophic event. We're talking about a, an act of God or a natural disaster.
And we agree.
In which case, um, if it's at, to that degree, the governor declares a state of emergency, and then FEMA comes and gets involved, because the Stafford Act is enacted, and federal funds become available to the communities to apply for the repairs. If it, if it impacted, uh, from my opinion, impacted any intermodal transportation facility such as this, that would meet the standard for federal reimbursement to get it fixed as quickly as possible. And I just cite some of the repairs that were done to Papa Squash Road, uh, during the last hurricane or whatnot. Those federal dollars get kicked in once and that, uh, declared state of emergency has been declared by the governor. So, I think, I think to Councilwoman Perella's question, that's where this is, and, and that's just kind of across, across the board. There's sometimes is a reimbursement, a seventy-five, twenty-five reimbursement, or sometimes the senators actually go to ninety-ten, or ninety percent federal dollars, but that, I, I don't wanna muddy the waters, but I just, I think it's information that you should have as a council, should something to that magnitude occur.
Thank you.
I, I have two thoughts about that. One is that what you just said, I agree with, and that would be in the event of like hurricane or act of God, that type of thing. My latest comment, the last one I just made, about just general grant money, has nothing to do with FEMA. It had to do with, like, the two towns, you know, they wanna do something on the water, the two towns could collaborate, and we could still reserve that right to negotiate with them around that kinda thing.
Exactly, that was my concern, and not limited us, um, I agree of our responsibility for the rest of the property, but let's not close the door for those opportunities and then have them say, oh, no, you, you gotta look at your memorandum, not even for that do we wanna negotiate. That's where I just wanted those-
So, do we just leave that out, Andy?
So, my reason for removing that sentence was for there to continue to be some obligation, as Councilman Stewart says, for them to partner with us and seek funding for future repairs. So, in light of Councilwoman Perella's sort of thoughts about working together to obtain grant funding, we could leave that in, um, talking about no further cost to the town of Portsmouth, but add a number four, which says that the town of Portsmouth agrees to diligently work with the town of Bristol to obtain, uh, future funding for repairs to this ferry dock, which is the lifeline for Portsmouth residents. And I think stating the fact that we expect them to work with us to continue to seek funding, um, is important. Maybe not, maybe not town funding, but maybe federal funding. I think they need to continue to be a partner and work diligently with us to get that, those grant funds.
So, Andy, did I hear you just amend your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Did I hear a second?
A second?
Okay. So, I would like, please, I know we've talked about a whole bunch, I'd like to know what the exact motion is right now. Can someone get that back to me? Andy, can you do it?
Yep.
Which Andy?
Sorry. I'll take either one.
Behind, uh, number two is to, um, clarify, um, the leased premises, um, to Exhibit A, um, removing the reference to the whole dock. And then, um, the second piece would be to add another section which states that, maybe in more legal prose, that the town of Portsmouth will work diligently with its counterpart, the town of Bristol, to seek additional grant fundings for, uh, maintenance repair to this vital lifeline for the town of Portsmouth, Portsmouth residents.
Might say collaboratively, but, yeah.
Collaborate?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, fluff it up.
I think you lost it when you said that, that's a problem. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Tim, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Administrator, did you wanna add something?
No.
May I? And, I just wanna clarify, though, we're also adding in, um, something about the catastrophic damage, we're adding that in as well.
Yeah.
And, we're also adding in something in the whereas is about, this doesn't impact Bristol and A&R's-
Yes.
Obligations, or-
So, this is a separate-
And if you're making a list, maybe, if you can add that these repairs are expected to last fifteen years.
At least.
At least.
But you're also gonna change the, um, some of, some of the whereas is from the Thane Street Dock to the west end of the Thane Street Dock.
Right, 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 to Exhibit A, leased premises, yes.
Right, okay.
Anything else? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Administrator, you had the second part of this, which was asking for these funds, correct? Okay. Does anybody need clarity on regu- in regards to where the funds are coming from, or why we wanna spend them?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve these funds being spent in this regard?
I would, um, move, Mr. Chairman, that we spend, um, up to seventy thousand dollars for the repair of the west end of the leased portion of the ferry dock, so that we can make the necessary repairs, um, as soon as possible, so we would, do we need to cite the source, or we'll work with the, um, the administrator will work with, uh, with our treasurer to identify the source, um, for this? And that we would be cross-sharing it with A&R and with the town of Portsmouth.
Second the motion.
Discussion?
I, I think the Finance Director would be better able to answer this, but I think we may have to request the two-ten, and then we get reimbursed from A&R in the town of Portsmouth, so, um-
So, when we, uh, put our bid documents out, you, you'll see that, um, bid authorization form, which indicates the funding source, so we'll just be really clear on that form of what the funding source is, and we'll make sure that the bid language is, represents the situation.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
I am.
Is there any other discussion?
Just said, I'm glad we're moving forward to make this dock safe.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again, Steve.
The, the next item's item I two. Uh, this was provided by the chairman and lays out a funding process for the use of the Colt Engateris Trust Funds.
So, just to remind, bless you, to remind everyone, we approved funds spent to, uh, for the new playground, uh, the AstroTurf, for lack of a better term, um, at Colt School, which brought, um, to the surface the fact that there was no really clear policy on how to, how one would petition this council, because the council, this council, controls those funds. So, there was no clear policy on how, how you go about that. So, this policy that you see in front of you was voted on and approved, um, by the school committee. Obviously, this is ultimately our policy and ultimately our responsibility and aren't okay, but the school committee agreed that this was an appropriate way, um, to go through the process. And that process is, quite simply, um, that, that these improvements will not include any routine maintenance. We've kinda talked about maintenance here tonight on other things, but, for example, um, it wouldn't include interior and exterior painting, or cleaning, or groundskeeping, or lawn mowing. This, these funds, this Colt Fund, and this policy was more designed for things that wouldn't normally happen within the school budget, would include, but wouldn't be limited to things like the beautiful pieces of, of, uh, the statues that are out in front, that they wouldn't normally do, but this one would allow for those improvements and repairs. The policy would suggest, well, states that the applicant would go in front of the school committee first. The school committee would review it, because they're ultimately, this was their argument, they're ultimately responsible for that school and its upkeep and maintenance. They would then vet it out, and they would come in front of the council and ask for the funds, once vetted out in front of them. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is why it's in front of us. I had a, and I expressed this with, uh, the current chair and the superintendent, that the applicant that came in front of us, that we ultimately said okay to, to do the AstroTurf, again, for lack of a better term, did that because they felt they didn't get, they weren't moving forward in their current situation. And I shared that with both the chairman and the superintendent, and I was clear to say that that was a concern of ours, and we wanted to know that, you know, that, that an applicant still has the possibility to come in front of us, but I don't believe it's appropriate that we approve this policy if you are, if, if our intention is that they can always just, uh, circumvent the school committee and get what, get what they wanted. So, it would seem that this policy should be enforced, um, but I did share with them that if, if, you know, something like that had happened in the past, uh, it happened again, we would certainly wanna have discussion with them. If you also look at this policy, it does state that the school committee will share with us when, uh, an applicant is in front of them to ask for these dollars, so we can attend, whether one of us or otherwise, so we can hear those applicants and what they're proposing, and, and, uh, maybe speak on their behalf if we so choose. Does that make sense?
Well, I'm in support of the, the policy, I think it's a good checks, check and balance system.
My only question would be to our treasurer, Julie, if there's anything that should be added, um, from your part, this is a town fund, the Colt Fund, um, and any securities or liable clauses that should be added, um, for the school committee and in protection for us as this process goes forward?
Um, I reviewed the document Nathan sent it my way, and it, it looked good to me. I don't think it needs any, um, any updates to it. I don't know if it's worth sending the solicitor's way, just in case they see anything, but I didn't, I didn't see any red flags, or it looked like good policy.
If this council is amenable to it, then maybe end a motion to approve, um, with the, with the, I'm sorry, with the solicitor's final okay, with language.
So moved.
Second?
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is the request for an executive session, which, again, I assume the council will want to take up at the conclusion of the public agenda.
Yes, sir.
The following that is Item K-1. You have the periodic report provided by Bristol County Water Authority, Barrington member George Champlin.
I'd just like to comment on the report from the Bristol County Water Authority, in which the directors approved fiscal year 2018 water rate increase of 3.25 percent effective of March 1st, 2017, which falls in line even with last year of a 3.25 percent increase. Along with that, in tandem with the road project for Bristol, we had expectations. We know all our roads are deplorable that we're trying to address, but Gibson was one major road that we wanted to address this past summer, but in light of the utilities that have to be done, so it's good that they approved also the cement lining of Gibson Road, Ridge Road, and Beach Road. So once that gets done, we can move forward as a town administration to address and partner with our road program going forward with those projections. Lou, I thought there was already discussion of this in the makes, but just to put clarity, if you can have a formal request, if my colleagues are amenable to this, request from the Bristol Town Council requesting a tri-town meeting with the Bristol County Water Authority to discuss their capital plan and updates and going forward with the future projects, if you can make that request.
I think it's a great idea. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The, the next item is from the solicitor's office regarding a resolution supporting legislative amendments relative to enacting property tax relief for volunteer firefighters.
Mr. Chairman, may I just suggest one small amendment to the language in front of you? In the last paragraph where it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that the town solicitors hereby directed to prepare appropriate enabling legislation," if we could add after the word "prepare" and submit to the General Assembly, because I think it's your intent that we move it right along, rather than, unless you want it, unless you want to see the actual legislation before it goes forward to the General Assembly.
Mr. Solicitor, clarity sake, we go through this process, we send this up to the state with the adjustments that you just suggested. Do we have to get specific on what we're speaking of here? Because at this point in time, we'd left this as dialogue that we were going to have at budget season. This was something that we're considering potentially doing this year. We had kind of committed to, more specifically, next year on it. So I guess my question is, do we have to get, because we haven't talked about what we want to do ultimately?
Okay. Then, then I would say that this is premature.
Okay.
And you probably don't want to adopt it today.
Because it has to be drafted and submitted to them to go on their floor to approve.
Right. You have to tell them what you want, so if it's not, if it's not sufficiently crystallized as to what you're going to be looking for, then we should wait.
I thought, I thought that Mike was at that meeting, and I thought because it says not to exceed, can't we do anything we want up in 2,500? If it's not to exceed 2,500, it does what it's in there?
Well, that's fine. That's, it's up to you if you wanted to or not. He was at the meeting, and this is just the authorizing resolution.
So we can, so that flexibility is there, and then we still have the conversations that we wanted to have at budget season to speak of whether it works this year or next year and how much it is.
And you could phase it in like a thousand dollars this year.
Right, anything that we're asking for is going to be enabling legislation anyway that you don't have to enact at all.
Fair enough. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, that's...
Because I know we haven't got into the meat and potatoes.
Because there was some discussion about phasing it in, like maybe a thousand dollars. I mean, I'm just making, I don't remember, like a thousand dollars one year, and then see how it goes, and then it would go up.
Yeah, I think the answer was you would, you would answer that by, by enacting an ordinance that was specific that this, this would just allow you to do it.
Right. No, I understand, but it has a number in here, but it says not to exceed that amount, so we could do less.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I think we'll settle that.
So everybody's clear on that?
Yeah, I might add one more change if I could.
Certainly.
As well, whereas the last sentence of that same paragraph talks about, based upon years of service, rank, and certification, I would add the amount of training hours, which I think the current model proposes, and I'm not quite sure, Chief, if that clarifies it, where we're not looking exactly for the certification of which those training hours get you, but actually the number of hours that the volunteers go through. Is that correct?
Right. So the only thing I looked at with that same last sentence is, and the enabling legislation, so again, just to recap, this would just allow us to make up an ordinance later, whether we fund it or not, in whatever year, we'll deal with that later. This just gets us through the state general assembly process, so we have the opportunity to do that. I would ask the solicitor, other than the cap of the 2,500 being stated in the enabling legislation, do we need to be specific on the details, or do we just handle that in the ordinance?
This is only the resolution. This isn't, this isn't the law.
Correct. But even in the, in the resolution, do we need to have specific details, or do we just say that, you know, based on...
I may be, I may be mistaken, but I think the resolution just says, this thing that we're giving you, we want you to pass it. Okay? So that really yet has to be drafted.
So the specifics need to be drafted, I guess, would be another way.
This is the supporting document from the council saying, the thing that we're giving you, legislature, okay, is something that we would really like you to enact, and this is our whereas way of saying that.
I would, I would go with the question that Andy raised. I would put that in because you put the other issues in. So you put service rank, number of training hours, and certification. So if anybody said, well, what's going to go into this, that lays it out in broad terms.
Right, and that's my, my question, did you just simply state that?
We can add it in.
You know, we just max out the 2,500? Or do we spell out exactly the whole thing? Because I would add in that it's also amount, amount of calls responded to and the appropriate training hours.
Yes, I wanted to see participation.
Which is a scale, so my point was, is do we basically, are we sending them the whole ordinance that we would, we would look at in the future, or are we keeping this as simple as possible just to enable it?
I think that's an important addition, the number of calls responded to, and I think that sets forth the framework, and then how we plug in the matrix as far as what the...
Put the criteria that's associated with the tax abatement, not to exceed 2,500. What falls in that perimeter? And then, like you said, the specifics are after.
What makes those three changes in that paragraph?
For clarity's sake to everybody, again, this is just the resolution, not the suggested enabling legislation nor the ordinance. So, but I think the solicitor's got a clear idea that we're looking for this, maybe including but not limited to X, Y, and Z. In that way, that leaves it open for us to be more taxing with those informations.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to, for property tax relief for our volunteer firefighters, with the addition of the amount of calls responded to be added and training hours.
And not limited to, you okay with not limited to?
Yeah, like that, that's a good...
Okay. And that'll allow more dialogue.
It's a good legislative word, not with...
I'm working on it.
Including but not limited to, that's a good one.
Andy, are you comfortable with, with what's being proposed?
That's fine.
Got it.
Second, is there any other discussion?
I just wanted to add, part of discussion as far as next steps, I think, after that workshop, I think considering carefully what this abatement is trying to accomplish is important. So if it's one, two, or three things, we should identify those. So for example, are we looking at more recruitment? Are we looking at more longevity? Are we looking at increasing number of training hours? Whatever we're trying to improve, we should identify. And once we identify those things, we should take a snapshot of where we are today, and we should plot, for example, you know, number of calls that people are making in a histogram sort of way versus number of training hours. So for example, a volunteer that is on average responding to 35 calls, they usually go to 45 hours of training. Figure out where we are today. Then we should modify that to see where do we want to be in two years? And then whatever abatements that we propose, we should go back and check and see if we're doing what we set out to accomplish and adjust accordingly.
Chief, in your presentation, you were going to track that, my understanding.
I thought you...
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the, basically, the nuts and bolts of the, the ordinance if it goes in the future, is that we're enabling this to see improvements, to see both recruitment, people becoming interested in volunteering, the current volunteers turning out and responding to the emergencies more often, and also the longevity of staying involved in the service for that lifetime, so to speak, or that 20 years. So if we see that this really has no effect on that a few years down the road, then, you know, we'll have to look at other options and other things to do.
Chief, this is your 10 seconds to say, I'm interested in joining the fire or rescue. How do I do that?
It's pretty simple. You just come to fire headquarters, and we will discuss it with you and point you in the right direction.
Spectacular. Where are the fire headquarters, Chief?
For Anawamsket Drive, Metacom, in Anawamsket.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Before you move off, Town Solicitor, I just want to let you know that the oral argument for the school district litigation has been scheduled before the Rhode Island Supreme Court for Thursday, March 9th. They start at 9:30 in the morning, but we're like number four, fifth in row, so it'd be later in the morning than that.
I may take the day off from working.
Now, we have the individual council member, agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
So at our last meeting, I said I wanted to be brief at this point, because we get so close to the end, and then we take a little extra time. So I had one thing, and it was in fact just this, about the lawsuit that's going on. Interestingly enough, had dialogue with my colleagues recently, the administrator recently, the treasurer recently, and had a lot of people say, well, what lawsuit do you speak of? So I just thought it was a, just 30 seconds to remind everybody that there was litigation that made Bristol responsible for about $2.9 million more for the schools than the year before, and then our current budget also includes that increase. So the litigation we speak of, Bristol doesn't believe that we're responsible for that, and still does not, and we walk through this through the end, and in fact, the solicitor mentioned this, that we have oral arguments, and then we should have an answer, if my memory's correct, by the end of October, is, is maybe earlier than that, but...
I would expect that we would have a decision probably by the end of June.
That's better news. So what that means is that if we are successful, and we truly believe that we are, that burden will be lifted and give us opportunity to look at a whole new world of things. So we're very much looking forward to that happening, and that's why I say I may take the day off from work and go there. But that's all I have. Good night, everyone.
Mr. Sweeney?
Well, you can get started on your spring cleaning. I know it's a little early, but this Saturday, February 18th, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., the farmer's market at Mount Hole Farm will be collecting your e-waste. So that's anything basically with a plug. It's a great opportunity to dispose of your TVs, typewriters, if you still, if those still exist in your basement, desktop computers, et cetera, in a responsible manner. So just please take advantage of it, and a big shout out to the Mount Hole Farm for providing us with this opportunity. And I hope you guys have a great President's Day weekend. Have a good night.
You said 9:00 a.m. to what? I'm sorry?
9:00 a.m. to, sorry, 1:00 p.m.
1:00 p.m.? Yeah. I just wanted to make sure. So 9:00 to 1:00, you can go over there.
You can go over there.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Tiska?
I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work of Jessica Flomar and Diane Williamson, putting together the Economic Development Assistance Grant, the federal grant, working with the statewide Marine Trades Association and Composites Alliance. This grant is significant in a way which we'll be able to identify the needs for our local and regional businesses in the composites industry, and then come up with a plan on how we can grow and innovate. So I think that's a great thing for the town of Bristol. So good job, Jessica and Diane, on that. And then, lastly, I just wanted to float an idea out there. I attended with my daughters the town hall meeting in East Providence with our federal delegation, and it was quite exciting for, I don't know if any of you went or heard about it, but not that I would want to subject this council to some of the energy in that, but I think it's a healthy process, and I think we should consider as a council, holding a similar town hall event, maybe at the State House, or if bigger areas needed, maybe the university, where we can make ourselves available, kind of like what we do prior to the election, to open questions to the public, and have a free flowing dialogue about what's going in, on, in around town, and just improve accessibility for our government. So I'd just like to have that considered by my fellow counselors, and maybe we can take that up as an agenda item and, and a future meeting.
I think it's a great idea.
Ms. Perella?
I don't have anything. Leave it or not.
Mr. Stewart?
Just like to wish our condolences to Roswell Bosworth Jr. He was associate of the East Bay Phoenix. Sometimes I'm on their good list, then sometimes I'm on their bad list, but to their family, he was integral part of this community. So again, our condolences out to him. Just a reminder of a great event, March 11th. It's a sad day, the potato speed. Just go to that website. They're honoring all the great teachers within our community, so we're very fortunate for that. And again, just to keep it short, thank you, Mike Davis, Archimont Sajin Arm, to everyone attending here tonight and everyone viewing at home. And be safe on those roads, and we thank the DPW for your busy weekend of cleaning up time and time again. Thank you.
Town Administrator, agenda items.
I'd also like to extend the town's condolences to the Bosworth and his families. Mr. Bosworth did a great deal of good for the town. One of such things is Linden Place, and he was very involved with, with preserving it. And one other shout out to King Philip Little League, one of our best organizations, in my opinion, but it's open enrollment right now for boys and girls of ages four and up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Solicitor?
Okay. I, we're asking, we're back here under I-3, requesting an executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law's 42-46-5A5 regarding to various real estate transactions, long-term